Is the community forum, this is an opportunity for the people of the district to be able to talk to the board. Yeah, dialogue back and forth. When we get to the regular board meetings, we have delegations to be heard. That section is for the people in the audience to be able to address the board with items that are on, above items that are on the agenda. There would be no dialogue during that period. And from the, from the beginning of the board meeting, a regular board meeting, dialogue ends between the audience and the board. So, has somebody else, Stephen, had want to talk to us? And there are four of them.
Hi, so I guess I have a few questions. I'll try not to take up too much time. So, starting off with just the fourth grade moving between the buildings possibly. I was looking at the floor plans that you guys certainly would have for the fourth graders would go. And the main thing I've set out to you were two things. The math class that's on the fifth grade floor, right now I believe it is the advanced math as well as some other sixth grade math classes in there. Where would that be going to move into? Because in the upstairs, I believe you already have three mattresses and you don't plan on expanding for that extra space. And also, another room that the fourth grade would be moving into is kind of behind Mr. Waiters current office. And it's some kind of storage, so where would that storage be?
Stephen, would you, yeah, would you ask what, can you take that one or?
You know, go ahead. I'm kind of the one who kind of focused right at the floor plan and things like that. So Stephen, the math class that currently is occupied, is occupied by three different math educators, all who are which are time. So, the movement would be upstairs. So that they, that person or that one math class probably wouldn't have their own location. But throughout the day, obviously, there's a lot of classrooms that are open that we would let gladly and easily slide some of those math classrooms into other classrooms that are vacant downstairs in those areas.
And the storage?
The storage is something that we, you're going to continue to take a look at and things like that. Again, we always get creative, whether it be in stairwells and Mr. Vinnie has graciously or involuntarily some of his spaces as well. But again, district storage on a whole has been, is pretty tight. We already do rent some storage space over here by QuickTrip for some of our theater things that we don't use all the time. So, that's something that we'll continue to keep an eye on. And that's just kind of an issue with the growth of the district and what lights in all of our classrooms.
And then, so is the next one, I was going to raise my next question about projections and stuff. As you guys provided, I believe it was all the way back to 2017 to 18 school year, I believe it was, and projections. When were those projections made? For like the, that you guys shared with us?
Those weren't projections, those were actual numbers.
Okay, those were, yeah, and then the projections for the next year, when were those like sort of evaluated? Were they this year or?
We haven't made any formal projections for next year. Again, ultimately, every year it's kind of ebbs and flows based on the economy and vacant space too as well. So, we haven't made any formal projections and/or hired a consulting firm for surveying of the community or, or possible, haven't seen that to be effective.
So, last time the fourth grade was moved over, I believe it was from the intermediate to primary, I think that was after I was here. So I got it supposed to about six years ago, is that about?
2013, I think.
Okay, and then I'm making an assumption that for the renovations to the building, that was about through three years ago, plus an additional year for strategic planning. So that would be about four years-ish ago?
I don't understand the question.
Just when were plans put in place for the renovations over to the intermediate school?
To here? We're currently in our second school year.
Yeah, when were plans made to like start planning for?
Talking about a pre-COVID year ahead, pre-COVID.
So, I guess the question kind of would be back then, because obviously one of the questions or things on the presentation that you share was that there's an imbalance between student population, between primary and intermediate school. So, back in that time when you moved them over to the, the fourth graders over to the primary school, and then also with the renovations coming through, were projections back then that there's going to be an influx where the, where the fourth graders have to move back over or?
No, we didn't project that, but there was building plans and the board did go ahead in contract with EUA, an architect firm, and did propose, I do believe, three different building floor plans up in our academic wings if in fact we needed to expand at that time. So, but at that time, again, we were down right around that 750, 800-ish kids and, yeah, you see, I don't want to say linear in or exponential growth.
I would help answer your question there. We were going through a period of time where our larger classes were falling off and going narrow bit. And so the class sizes coming up, the smaller ones, and I was kind of trend all over the narrow bit area that all the class size was growing. So we've actually now moved through that declining enrollment.
And my next sort of question would then go with the enrollment numbers that were shown. So currently, and as stated in the frequently asked question, the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade wing is already very overcrowded.
No, that's the, it's crowded up there, but it's always been crowded up there.
Yeah, okay, so right now, we currently have 98 seventh graders and 93 eighth graders. And then looking at the numbers for our current second and third graders, it's at 95 and 100. So, four years online, those are going to be six and seven graders that are going to be upstairs, obviously, in that area. Do you see, is there an issue that might arise in that four years where the intermediate schools, again, going to have, there's going to be an imbalance or there's going to be more students over at the intermediate, intermediate school? So then the fourth graders would have to move back to the primary school?
And we've kind of stated in previous meetings, as soon as there's an opportunity to move back, I mean, nobody's going to argue that fourth graders belong here. In an ideal world, we know they're over there. But again, based on some of the things that, and some of the recommendations that I'm putting forward in the frequently asked questions list and/or the proposal, we're not in an ideal situation right now. So, but yeah, so if in fact that enrollment, like being kind of tied in as it comes over to here and some of, and if all of a sudden we start to see a decline ever in primary school, either we're forced to do that, or as the district continues to grow, then we're going to be forced to do some other things, whether it's, you know, multifaceted, whether it's doing additions here within our walls, wing, or doing a combination of both.
Okay, so, because it just sounds like to me kind of, they were kind of playing ping pong with the fourth graders.
No, we're, we're not playing ping pong with them at all. Nope.
All right, then just one question about a different topic. It's about kind of the culture of Merton. So, clicking through board meetings and stuff, I found that three plus one tonight, so four staff members have already left and it's only halfway through the school year. Why is that? Is that an irregular number or, or have, does it have so many staff members that leave even halfway through the school year?
Well, it, it all depends on individual situations. If we have a retirement, if the individual who's leaving tonight gained a full-time employment in a different school district. We have IAs that kind of come and go. Again, there's, we had a person leave the profession back in October. So, again, it's not ideal. Obviously, we want people to maintain and they sign a contract, we want them to fulfill that contract. Hopefully, you know, people have to do what they have to do. But we're disappointed in those people leaving.
Is it, isn't irregular sort of like number to have four people leave halfway through the year or?
Yeah, it's something that doesn't happen regularly at all.
So, I know you kind of stated like some people left the profession or they're getting full-time jobs. Do we know why exactly like there's an influx this year compared to other previous years?
Again, one individual decided to retire at semester time. One person left the profession. And then another individual has gained full-time employment within another, another school district. So, yeah, I can't remember the fourth person, but he's retired.
Isn't unique to just schools?
Yeah.
Every sector of the hiring issue is, is a struggle right now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to us? Brandon, or?
I have two comments. One, I forgot, I'm not sure what his name that was.
Murray.
Yeah, okay. I noticed that one of the provisions was having prime staff to be able to participate in those learnings. Have you got any thoughts about potentially that case having the day off, which is super disruptive for parents to work? And also just for children to like have field trip that day and some of the staff support that or things like that, something to keep them in school, maybe allow the staff to have some freedom? I have one thought. I don't know.
This can be that, sure. Sure, it certainly has, yeah. And that's one of those things where we run into some supervision struggles. And what we do think about throughout the year, when there is an opportunity to pull during the year, that's not disruptive. You know, field trips are always kind of, it's a little bit difficult to send the second grade, or second grade just went, or the second or third grade just went. And if we would have kept the staff behind for some professional learning, first of all, we'd need that whole team, we'd need those five educators. Right now, I don't have five, we don't have five individuals to cover that level of supervision that's needed as well. So when we do take a look at the calendar, we really do, we take a look at, and we try to be least disruptive to families. One of the things we did hear that we cut back on the last couple of years have been the half days. You know, those are super disruptive, they certainly are. We know that snow days are super disruptive. But no, we do want to create a very family-centered opportunity for our calendar, and that's why we don't do anything like early weeks days or late starts and stuff like that. So, we have been creative with our staff, the staff learning about bringing them early in on Wednesdays and maybe three staff days, contractual days, be able to do that. So we are trying to be creative, and in the past, we were able to be more creative because it was very easy for us to say, hey, I'm going to pull third grade or a half day to do some learning around a curriculum or a strategy or something. But for instance, this past Friday, we had 18 staff members out. Yeah, we were lucky enough, the gym, some of the work of the principals and people, that we were able to get that covered. Ideally, we were able to have some of those opportunities, but our, our workforce and our sub shortage, again, the substitute teachers would love to have it. But, I mean, we do really want to make a schedule that is family-centered, but also is that, that student-focused as well.
Another comment, can I just, sure. How many days are professional learning days?
We have approximately 176 student days and professional learning, we don't get to 191, minus three, and 188. So we have approximately 12, I'd say 10 to 12 of those that are non-student days.
So those are, are some of the?
Six of them are before, actually, we have lots, 74, yeah, yeah, six to seven before. And then, again, that's really where, we wish we would have more professional learning throughout the year, ideally. But we also know those days off are very disruptive. So that's why we try to front load them in the beginning of the year, which isn't ideal. But then we strategically place them throughout the year to try to be least disruptive. And that's why we'll add on like for an extra day, you know, make other things that cover weekends or something like that too.
And then for summer school this summer, are you guys planning on doing a third session or the last year?
Yep, so we probably, right now, we're planning only two. Again, we have tried all sorts of different things with August, whether it be a camp option. Again, it really comes down to getting faculty and staff to be able to do that. Now, our custodial team greatly enjoys not having August, so we're not as rushed. But we know that summer school, again, we want summers programming, we really do, because part of our school funding program and system. But right now, we are not planning on anything in August. So, we'll get those summer school dates up there, everybody.
And last year, come to fourth grade, so I am the educator, should be impacted by fourth grade. Have you guys consulted any other schools and have transitioned their graders to fourth graders, you know, school, like middle school, and you guys consulted it? See that how the impact was for social, emotional, dynamic, as a mental health standpoint? Because my concern is, they're going to be leaders in their fourth grade. They say that they get to be like the top dog, I'll play that way. They go to middle school, I assume now, they're like, oh, they show a big con and then kind of get lost. And then there are also the COVID kids, where we have a room was home for you every year, where they miss a lot of those social dynamics of learning, things like that. And so, I worry about the social, like the psychological aspect of it, and I don't know if that's been taken into consideration as much as some of the other like concrete things. For those things, you won't really know a lot. So kids are all like, yeah, I want to go to, you know, middle school, I don't think, they don't really know what they're asking for, because they will. And the other aspect of it is, why are we getting so many, so much attention from people that want to come here? Because I've been to the district just for a short period of time, but I've seen people calling in from private school, calling in because of our numbers academically, or the district form are so good. If we increase those numbers and don't increase staffing, I'm wondering how those are going to be impacted and then the deterrent for staying here.
We are, first of all, we will make sure that the building is staffed appropriately, certainly. I mean, we take a look at what's needed from year to year, whether that be through interventionist, core curriculum, tier one program, special education needs. We're going to make sure that we have the staff availability and that professional learning to really best meet the needs of our, for that standpoint too. The, the social emotional, again, we, we transitioned fourth to fifth graders. Again, I know they're one year older. And again, we'll continue to work with Stephen and his team with whatever. There's, there's going to be a leap, either it's fourth to fifth, or this year, obviously, we third to fourth. I can't, you know, I can't answer the question about how they feel like they're top dogs and, you know, that, and they are COVID kids from that standpoint. We know COVID took opportunities away from whether it be high school graduations, college graduations, eighth grade graduations. And we've seen a lot of resilience out of that too as well. So, but that's one of the things that we're going to make sure, and again, like Steve spoke to last time, whatever, whoever they transition, whether it's fourth to fifth or, or third to fourth, it'll be done with, with great care and great consideration too as well. So, we don't want to put them into the big, the, you know, oh, what is it like to be middle school? Again, the plan is to really isolate them, it really is, just like we try to isolate two, oh, primary school kids. Sorry about that. So, again, it'll be done with great care.
Have you guys considered the option to treat, so if we do end up with the middle schoolers, sorry, the fourth graders to middle school, have it kind of more of a hybrid solution where like they're treated like this school's a satellite school for them and they integrate, they push into elementary as much as possible for like assembly or do things like that? Or for like the overall school activities, they're still part of the elementary curriculum, and keep them a part of that.
I guess we haven't thought of it that way. We wanted to make sure that they felt part of this school.
Yeah.
Part of this school is what we really, you know, and again, we've talked to like student senate, and they, they still wouldn't have some of those opportunities. Because there's just so many kids and, you know, we want to be able to manage the best we can and make sure that we produce a great product through some of those, those new activities. But it's something that we haven't thought, I, I guess, again, we can possibly, you know, maybe, how do you create leadership opportunities possibly from fourth to third? We can think about that, but I guess for like a school assembly, again, depends on what, what the topic is or the appropriateness. Again, that's just working with our administrative team to say, you know, how do we best meet the needs of this group from that standpoint too? But, yeah, and the other piece that you asked too about was, is, you know, have we talked to any schools and done any research on third to fourth grade? We haven't, and I'm not real familiar with a lot of schools that jump from third to fourth. I know there could be third to fourth by six or whatever, we're kind of in a new need situation there. It's typically is that fifth to sixth or fourth to fifth would be that transition.
I guess that's kind of where I'm at with me is, the question when they're not fully included in the whole social, emotional environment, because they're not going to be part of, it's not that they're not going to be part of the musical. And so they're there physically, but they're not there like holistically as far as part of, they can't have, they probably can't do band yet. So there's certain things that they won't be able to do, so I'm just thinking, it's, how should we always, if we do it and move them to try to push them back to elementary so that they can have what they need that they were expected? Because they start school in the fourth grade, and they're like, oh, okay, I know that I'm going to be here for fourth grade. And then you switch right here, and that's a whole different mindset that they weren't prepared for. So yes, you know, fourth, if they go, we need that all along, and we need the elementary, yeah, okay, if we're in middle school, especially if there's a huge shift and of course the kids are all just, that's totally there. Parents don't, we're going to be there.
Right, and that's really where, you know, kind of what we can say, as soon as there are, so maybe we can continue to plan, whether it's through a construction, a scheduling, you know, that addition time too as well. So, we're, we're going to make sure it's, it's great. Whatever happens, whether we're over there and we've got, you know, we're going to stay there, we're going to be here, we're going to continue to improve and enter that, that transition work where it is.
You know, it's like two drafts of work. Hey, we're going to move into our regular board meeting and we're going to start that out. Delegations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, my nation, undoubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this meeting is in progress, both in all the home portion places. And I'd like to see a motion to approve the agenda, someone. Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion is carried. Okay, we're on to the minutes, and we have the November 28th meeting. Make a motion to approve the minutes of, uh, one day November 28th meeting, I think, 2022.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from November 28th. Is there any additions, corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes from November 28th, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. We are on to the financial report and bill listing.
A motion to approve about your listing of November 9th, 2022 through December 9th, 2022, starting with payroll check number 553836, an amount of $91.42. Deposit number 900058415 through 900058528, an amount of $156,926.58. Wire transfer number 202200156 through 202200171, an amount of $135,566.72. Total payroll of $292,584.72. Accounts payable check number 55618 through 55660, an amount of $354,830.40. Wire transfer number 202200161 through 202200163, an amount of $6,970.11. Credit card transaction number 112022, an amount of $34,402.63. ACH direct deposit number 222300060 through 222300069, an amount of $1,144.80. Total accounts payable of $397,347.95. Total disbursements of $689,902.67.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion to approve and a second, financial report and bill listing. I'm very young. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the bill listing and financial report, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. We are on to delegations to be heard. No one has signed in asking. Speak to us. Yep, somebody would like to. Okay, we're going to keep moving. And we are on to district administrative report and action items.
For donations, yep, donations. So we'd like to thank the Black Thought Giving Fund for donating $150 to the Merton Intermediate School on behalf of Happy Employment Engagement Fund. So thank you very, very much. And that will just be going to Steve's principal account. And then I would also like to thank an anonymous Merton family for donating $200 to go towards lunch accounts that Steve was in need. So, very, very thank you for the generosity there and thank you for that donation. So, again, just would like to present and again, thank you to our donors, present the donations and motion to approve them as presented.
Motion to approve the two donations as presented by Dr. Rose.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the donations. And a second, the discussion. All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. Personnel actions.
So we have two personnel actions. One is, Stephen, we're talking about, we have Erica Sisada, who was our occupational therapist, had submitted her letter of resignation per her agreement that has fulfilled that employment contract given this version date notice. So that'd be the first one we have. And again, thank you to Lori and the specialized team who has found a replacement for Ms. Sisada. And again, we are proposing that Kelly Darren, she offered an individual teaching contract to become our new occupational therapist. Kelly has about 25 years of school occupational therapy, and most recently in the McQuan Deep Hill School District, and she walked these. So, we're very fortunate again to be able to fill that position as quickly as we did. So again, thank you to Lori and her team for approving that too. So, again, just looking for two motions, one to make a motion to read, to approve the letter of contract termination, Erica Sisada has presented. And then that second motion to approve the individual teaching contract for Kelly Darren has presented.
Motion to approve water resignation for Erica Sisada and?
Okay, we have a motion, second to approve the resignation of Erica Sisada. Any questions, discussion? And all in favor of the approving the recommendation of administration to accept the resignation of Erica Sisada, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, now the higher.
Motion to approve the individual teaching contract for Kelly Darren as presented by the administration.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract of selling to Darren.
Darren.
Darren, Kelly Darren.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor then say aye. This is your end discussion.
She starts her last time.
Yep, yep, so, yep, hopefully, there's going to be one day of crossover with her and Erica. And we're still working that out with her employer, so, but we'll be able to start right on time and we will continue to not have a gap in any ID services.
Okay, and the discussion, and so we have a motion and a second for the contract for Kelly. All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. We are on to staff recognition.
Sure. This evening, we'd like to present two, not, uh, staff recog, staff recognition. So staff recognition. So, we would like to recognize Julie Schmara, Julie, if you can come on down here, and Caitlin Cott. Caitlin was unable to make it this evening, but she was very, very touched by having the. Julie has been with us for nine years, and Julie and Caitlin both have nine years, and they work with some of our most needy students. And I can tell you that in my interactions with both Julie and Caitlin these last nine years. And I can tell you that, uh, in my interactions with both Julie and Caitlin these last nine years have been, yes, sir, yeah, I mean, just whatever it takes and we'll do, work with any children, anywhere, crossing guards, bus duties, it doesn't matter, and they do it with a smile on their faces and with, with, really just with great joy in their hearts and on their faces too as well. So, um, Lori, our director of special education, has a few things too. We'd like to kind of have some staff testimonials. Lori, I'll turn it over to you.
I just wanna say first of all that our instructional assistants are such an integral part of our special education programs. They're so important and so I'm so glad that we were recognizing a couple of them tonight. Um, so Julie is in her ninth year with the district. I remember when she came on in two thousand and fourteen. And during her time here, as Ron mentioned, she's always been willing to take on any roles and responsibilities anywhere that we meet her. She's been at the primary school, she's come over to the intermediate school. Lots of skills working with kids of lots of different ages and, and lots of different needs. She works with kids in the classroom at the primary school, comes over. I remember supervising the middle school study hall one year when we needed somebody. She would come over and do whatever and does it well, and does it really well. Um, she has a very calm and patient demeanor with all of our students, which works so well with them and such a strong commitment to making sure that all of our students feel safe and supported and included in our school. Um, so there were a couple of people who nominated Julie to the Merton MVP program and I wanted to share what they had said about her. Um, Julie always has a great attitude and no matter the situation or environment, she finds a way to make it work. Her ability to switch gears quickly is admired and she always goes with the flow, staying calm even in challenging situations. Julie demonstrates a willingness to accept feedback, always finding ways for kids to be successful. I love having her help in the gym and she is highly skilled at what she does. Most importantly, she makes a difference in the lives of many each and every day. And then another, Julie has made her space with me several times with various students throughout the week. Each time she is highly engaged with the lesson and the students, ensuring that the student has the best opportunity to learn and participate as completely as possible. She's incredibly hands-on with the learning work and has an incredible ability to balance high and reasonable expectations to ensure the student is appropriately challenged but able to succeed. So Julie, thank you so much for everything you do for our students.
Thank you, Julie. And we would like to say a few words about Caitlin's student.
Caitlin couldn't be here tonight, but Caitlin is also in her ninth year at Merton School. Um, she has worked at our intermediate school building here for the, in fact exclusively. And she also, she has some great attributes that make her an outstanding instructional assistant. And one of those again is the flexibility. Caitlin is flexible, she works with lots of different students with lots of different needs in the classrooms. Um, she's out doing the crossing guard duty, um, in the morning, like Sierra here, um, doing the crossing guard duty. She is incredibly flexible, she's happy to take on any assignment that she's given. I don't know that I ever see Caitlin without a smile on her face. She's, she's so positive, she's just such, demonstrates so much positivity. And she's developed relationships with our students, not just her students with IEDs, but all students in the building. She's so approachful and our students know that if they have a problem and they need something, they can always go to Caitlin and she will help them with that. So she has been an outstanding member of our special education team. And, um, I wanted to share a couple of things that some of the other special education staff said about her. Caitlin is an invaluable instructional assistant at Merton Intermediate School. She excels at working with students with complex needs. Caitlin makes it her personal goal to ensure the students she works with are well-supported and needs are being met. Because of Caitlin, students have grown academically, behaviorally, and socially. Students feel safe with Caitlin. She holds them to high expectations while also making sure they feel okay when they don't succeed. Caitlin goes the extra mile in all aspects of her job. Whether she is doing crossing guard duty in the bitter cold or working on pre-eligible homework with students who are reluctant, she continues to be positive and flexible. We are so appreciative of Caitlin and everything she does for Merton Intermediate School, we would truly be lost without her. And one other, it is hard to write about Caitlin without listing every good cliche about someone. Her compassion for students is evident. She goes above and beyond for the students' families and her coworkers, coworkers in Merton on a daily basis. She is intuitive, dedicated, and committed to doing what is best for the students who need the most. Caitlin has guided students through just about every class, grade, field trip, crosswork, and recess that Merton, Merton Intermediate has to offer. She comes to work every day with calm energy, a sense of humor, and a hug if someone needs one. We are lucky to have her here. So although Caitlin isn't here tonight, I hope that you will watch and, um, and hear all the wonderful things that everybody had to say about her and how much we value her here at Merton.
Okay, we're on to the committee reports and just have student achievement.
Yeah, so right before the meeting tonight, uh, we did, uh, we had a presentation on, uh, what the, kind of starting to get some thoughts and ideas around, uh, our explore wheel, uh, next year, uh, with the, uh, in the encore in the intermediate school and taking a look at what we wanted to do there. So you'll see a memo there and a big conversation piece and a big discussion will be right around, what do we want to do with the seven, eight, or six, or eight FCL as well? Where do we want to place that? Do you want to place it into the, uh, the explore wheel? Do you want to keep that is? Again, we did present a few options for the, uh, for to consider and the student achievement team to consider. And those are all kind of listed in the packet there. And then finally, we did get an update from Mr. Newcomer and the work that Tim and his team have been doing, uh, at the intermediate schools relates to their school improvement work. And, uh, highlighted, uh, the five key areas as part of our highly liability schools work. And outline some of the work there too as well. So thank you Steve for that. So, yeah, we'll, we'll continue to update from this next time. I do believe it's a daily update, and it goes over there and then we'll bring back the, uh, the explore discussion to make sure it gives them direction as we continue to plan for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Thank you. We're on to new business and first item is information discussion and possible action about around the possibly moving fourth grade to Merton Intermediate.
Kind of turn it over to the board, if they have any questions or any recommendations or...
If we want as a board to take action on.
Could we hear from the board on the proposed new spaces?
That was, I thought that was something that was supposed to be...
It wasn't linked in the document, this pin map.
Then you, it wasn't linked in the document?
Wasn't the board, board packet, it's not the board, that's it.
Okay.
One of the things when I met with Ron was I said that I'm already happy with the license.
Yep. Or is it so?
Is it?
Yeah. Um, Lori, did you want to talk about the, uh, again, your kind of anybody?
I just wanted her feedback, so.
Sure.
Uh, the last time we got together as a board, we spent a lot of time talking about move and creating spaces, uh, at the primary school to, uh, for lack of a better term, replace lost space over the last several years, uh, as that school has grown and, and had, you know. Uh, so I think we all met with Dr. Russ on this. And we kind of walked through and he showed us the different spaces. But just your opinion on how this, uh, proposal would meet your needs and your team, kids? Just general feedback, I appreciate it.
Sure, so the proposal that, that we put out, that Ron has put together, I've shared that or we've shared that with the team. Ron and Becca and I took most of the team who could be here and the other two I talked to individually. Talked, we walked around and we looked at all those spaces and talked about, um, what we needed and we feel as a team, I agree, the team members also agree, that as it's put down there on the, that proposal, that would meet our needs in special education for serving our students. If they were to, if we were to stay at the fourth, the fourth grade were to stay at the primary server.
And not just that, I don't know, like you and, you and I are on the same page with this with special education. We wanted to make sure you didn't feel like you were losing a big space by needing all the class halls spaces. Is it true that you do want smaller spaces because it's easier to meet with students or...
The early childhood classroom is a little big right now anyway, so, you know, it's, it's a little bit too big. So we wanted to go a little bit smaller. They, the staff wanted it to be a little bit smaller. So losing that big space for early childhood was not a problem. Um, and the teachers really, they don't need a full classroom to meet with students. They need a space where they can meet with students individually. And so those spaces as they are would meet that need. And we do try to serve students in their classrooms as much as we can too. We try to be inclusionary and serve students in their classrooms. And we would also use some of the pods that are between some of those classrooms for meeting with students as well.
I do have one question too. Um, we had an email earlier, this was for last night. Um, is fourth grade, is there any way to shift things where like first grade could be down by fourth grade? Instead of having our oldest and the youngest split by each other, could first grade, could fourth grade and one oh seven first grade split? I mean, that's putting them really far away. Is there any way to...
Not have fourth grade and fourth grade across from each other? Because it's kind of giving the opposite concerns of an eighth grade and a fourth grade or anything.
Um, again, when we developed this, when I say we, we were taking a look at this, it was about location of students too as well and to their peers, to their peers. And I understand because I think E one oh seven, if we were to take the fourth grade and move them or you could like third grade over there, I mean, you can continue to domino effect. Uh, again, we wanted to kind of group not only for professional collaboration, but for peer, peer interaction too as well. That's why we, when we took a look at this, we felt that that was the best to place them there. And we knew that yes, we're putting some of our, our oldest across from, from our fourth grade. Right now, we're just down them all from each other, so, but, but yes, uh, again, obviously anything can occur. We wanted that professional and that, that peer interaction instead of putting just one grade level on an island, one classroom on an island.
What if you moved fourth grade and one oh two, so, or, yeah, fourth grade and one oh two, so you have fourth. Fourth grade has a little more by themselves, they don't have bathrooms, like they have that corner. And fourth grade could actually be closer to fourth grade with that. I think you should probably talk to the fourth grade teachers and see to that.
Yeah, but that's true, I mean, you could, yeah, anything, ideally, we would love them in that area, but if we moved one oh two, it'd be the first piece, I would say. Uh, the, the only piece would be that storage area, uh, that would be a fourth grade storage area would stay between one oh two and one oh four because that storage space, that's kind of allotted for, it says fourth grade, is still gonna be needed for OTPT and these special education concerns too as well, so. But, uh, no, nothing that we could possibly consider that certainly.
And our fourth grade cubby is the same as fourth grade cubbies?
Correct, uh, dimensions and size wise, correct. And, um, we would be looking at, again, the cubbies that would be designated for that fourth grade would be down by the music room, compared to that's related. And that's just where we have the extra twenty-five to thirty cubbies. As far as the special education, I think the smallest one is seventy-seven. Seventy-seven, that's what we, yeah, measured that, yep, so that would be the smallest, that'd be the smallest. Correct, and that's where we, we sat and, and either individually or in that forty-five minute tour. We, we talked about basically every aspect about where we kind of move, the rationale, where we could go, why are we gonna do this? So we're reset and, and give a lot of here consideration and they asked a lot of thoughtful questions to these guys. Because if we, if we do move fourth grade over to here, special education would have their own classroom and you would have three people sharing an, of an open classroom. So in this proposal, they now would have kind of walls and more of a, a privacy area. Again, they have their own phones and things like that too as well, so, uh, more of a private area.
Also want to thank the community for humiliating us. Really, it's hard to be up here, so we appreciate knowing and ideal, so.
Well, and coming and speaking to us.
Yes, and speaking and going to the forums and all of these.
I mean, I think we're gonna, well, it's okay, I think part of the conversation, or maybe it's a conversation down the road, but it's class sizes. Because I feel, uh, if we continue to grow, if we continue to add, you know, thirty new residents each year, and we can control obviously, it's easy at the primary school, that's an easy decision to make. So there won't be growth there, but if we continue to grow, you know, our class sizes are gonna be the limiting factor after, if, if and when we adopt this board plan. And it comes down to class sizes and what, what, uh, our parents and staff are willing to accept for class sizes. So we can either have that conversation now or months from now, but I just think like, is we run out of space other than knocking on walls after this?
And that doesn't give you a lot of space, it just shrinks up. It gives you more classrooms, but smaller classrooms too as well, right? So I think if we continue to grow, it's a class size negotiation or eventually fourth grade comes over here.
And maybe we don't want to have that conversation now, but I, I just think at, at some point, if, if the house is continuing to build, if people can, it comes down to class sizes. And that's gonna be the only lever we have to pull.
Right.
Essentially, other than either moving here and having this conversation again or, you know, building, you know, the activity on, which, you know, um, will most likely cost a lot of money.
Yes.
So.
That makes me, I have a question.
Yeah.
By going with either one of these proposals, it's the same thing, right? There is opening two classrooms, so either way, it's the same class sizes we're talking about. It's just unless we build, is the only other way that we're gonna work.
Not necessarily. Um, in this section, right now, this is a, this proposal is basically a five-section school plus one. Okay, so one, like for instance, this proposal has six, has six sections of first grade. Everywhere else is five. If we did an influx of five payers for instance, like we did a year ago, we had to go from five to six. We physically don't have a location for them without putting them, like we can go look for the teacher's lounge, maker's, or teacher's lounge, comedian's space area, that's a classroom that has no windows, that's an interior, not ideal, obviously. So we are just running out of space. So then it comes down to is, is I have so many classrooms, somebody, one section needs to be eliminated to allow one section to grow, if that makes sense.
It does, but if you move over here and we go, sorry, and you need a different one. We are just adding two new classrooms over here, which means two, because right now you have fourth, second grade. I just want everybody to understand, like, by this, we're adding another second grade and it's the same, same two rooms that you needed, right? That was when we moved in. So I, by making this decision, it's the same, basically, in that way.
Yes, but in essence, yes, in essence, yes.
Agreed. This is, this is a solution that we only have right now.
Right now, this would be a solution for now and then ultimately it becomes a different conversation.
By, by potentially making a decision today or next, or we gain time to, and you, I don't think it's part of our discussion tonight, or is it part of our, uh, EUA proposal or is it...
Um, it's not part of it. I mean, we, you can discuss it, um, because it's all part of the, the exploration of it, but there is no action on that moving that contract.
Okay, so we asked you to go to the architect firm that helped design this space to get some proposals for various scenarios at the primary school and here. So by making a decision, if we do on this, we have time then to continue to explore more of a longer-term solution for growth that contains.
You have, you have short-term and long-term. Because we have the long-term growth, we have long-term, possible long-term growth solutions here with ideas and concepts, obviously not a lot of dollars behind that, but much easier to do that, leave that out. But, uh, you, EUA has to put a proposal together for a couple of different phases, whether it's from a, a, you know, a population study about what can be done with Merton Primary School to, you know, options of program, adding wings and then putting financials behind it, and all the way from referendum and support to...
Just a word of caution, side conversations should not, I was just asking a question on campus. Everybody should be able to hear our discussion here, the board, the way they're violating these.
This is directly numbered by, uh, Zmail, sorry.
Let's pleasure the board.
I make a motion to keep the located fourth, fourth grade where located at the primary school. We're going with possible option one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to leave the fourth grade at the primary building with option one.
Yes.
Assuming that.
I was, I would like to, I, I ask respectfully ask as a motion to just, um, keep, keep fourth grade at Merton Primary School. So again, as movement, we can let, let the administration figure out where it's going to go, but Lindsay, I think your comment about moving closer together is certainly worth a lot of consideration, worth consideration for sure. If, about where they go in those three areas, yep, certainly, because it doesn't matter which one they go with, I think we'd have to talk to our team, it would be relocating a four K teacher and again, how important is it for them to be next to that storage room, so we just would have to engage our staff a little bit more with that and see what we feel would be best. That's why I respectfully ask that, it's just the one fourth grade stay there and let us figure it out.
I want to draw my second for option one.
All right, I wouldn't know why we're doing a motion now, but if we want to make a motion to keep fourth grade at the primary school.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to keep the primary school, the fourth grade at the primary school, question?
Question. I recognize you wanting flexibility to do this, but there's also a build out that needs to occur. So multi point question here, estimated costs to do this, because this is different than, I think what we, I talked about back in October. To, uh, that would need to come back to formal approval.
Correct, okay, correct. Yep, so two things would happen is ultimately now we would start to engage a, you know, some initial planning that will create a bid document for that and then we will go up to bid to, you know, contact a lot of contractors, but before a dime is spent on the project, certainly we'll come to the board. So we'll have some construction costs and then we'll have some technology improvements, I would be, telephones, uh, smart panels and things like that, but no, that'll all come in front of the board hopefully by February, March the earliest, or March the latest, I mean, that might require a special meeting if we have to march.
And you have a wall parter where you anticipate the investment cost?
Sure, anticipating approximately a hundred thousand dollars in construction costs, um, and then approximately thirteen thousand, ten, thirteen thousand in technology costs, so high end hundred twenty five, um, and again, those costs would come from, again, I have to work with April, whether they're going to come from our fund balance, our fund ten fund balance and or it's adjuties for us, seven to fund forty one, or we'll figure out where the funds come from, which best utilizes our scope finding formula.
Okay, your recommendation?
My recommendation that we move fourth grade to Merton Elementary School.
Any further discussion?
One other piece with that is the board will have to consider two if they want to move forward with some additional parking.
Yes.
Um, it's going to be another one, so that would be an additional cost, I'm still working with PLN, who's been a asphalt contractor for us and perhaps they're developing some schematics of how we could add up to between forty and fifty parking stalls. Um, they are recommending that we go behind Merton Primary School, um, in front, we've got a lot of, not empty green space, but then we've got a lot of water changes and things like that, and it might even eat some of the in and out from that standpoint, instead of making it just, and that was just their recommendation.
And with the PLN that's taking into account if we needed to dig, expand?
Oh, correct, yeah, we wouldn't touch any of that.
So that's being thought ahead?
Correct, and we're also thinking of our MAA, uh, fields and, and not so much the chiefs, because we got lots of green space that plays football in, it's that baseball diamond, I believe it's field four? Yeah, field four, right there, it's been a while since I played there, um, but field four, again, we are going to be, we're being sensitive to that, making sure that that still can, can occupy a, and I think MA right now uses it for eight, nine, and rolls currently, so again, keeping that in mind too as well.
We don't know what that cost might be.
Not yet, that should be coming hopefully for the new year, year ahead. And it's still, we still have time, they said they have plenty of time to get on people's schedules for us to be able to do that. This was on, on a facility plan, we're just a year ahead, uh, because that Merton, the back Merton Primary school needs to get dug up for those of you who drive it quite often.
So we're on the front end of this discussion. He was told us that, uh, you were rushing and the process. And you were, at that time, you were saying we were looking at a decision in January.
By, by January, that was my, my hope by January, because ultimately that will help, this decision will help guide my recommendations for open enrollment numbers as we look ahead to Merton Primary School, um, and that'll be a discussion that I'll continue to keep the board involved with and ultimately they'll be acting in January. Um, personally, I think that we spent, this is our third board meeting as well as a community forum, uh, we've been really upfront with our families, uh, and I think they've been communicating with the board and I've been having some conversations too, so, like Lindsay's point, and we said thank you about the engagement, so, um, again, that's why I would just, I asked the board that if they have all the information, they feel that their mind made up earlier, the better for our team to continue to move forward with some recommendations, whether we pursue some construction or we can begin to plan. Have to think about it too.
Okay, any further discussion? So the motion is to keep the fourth grade here in the primary building. All in favor of that proposal, say aye.
Aye.
Hold at the same time, aye. We are on to the twenty three twenty four calendar, so again, this is the second reading of the, uh, the calendar, and just looking, uh, haven't received any formal feedback from, uh, from the people at all after this announcement, so again, the administration is recommending the board make a motion to approve the twenty two twenty three district calendar as presented. We have a motion and a second to approve the twenty three twenty four district calendar. Is there any discussion?
I have a question, it was brought to me and I didn't help answer, so, um, I'm not saying to change it by any means, but why is it that we don't have more days before Christmas, like it feels like we're right on to Christmas, is there a reason, like, is that a time that we could do the the teacher development or, I didn't know what the justification was.
Sure, um, right now, this, this year's calendar presents, uh, in January, presents a longer break than what we have this year, it's actually by an extra day, so, um, so I guess we have, it, it really doesn't matter if you want to, again, we've come down to student days, again, we do value student contact time and what I kind of described to some parents who were like, hey, why do we have such a short Christmas break now or holiday break now? Um, I would say, do you want to go to school December twenty third or do you want to go to school June eighth? So that's, that's kind of where we start to enter into that conversation is, is if we really want that hundred seventy six days of school, um, now, we can go down, the state of Wisconsin, we have plenty of minutes, we certainly do. Because you have a minimum requirement of minutes, and given the length of our day and some of those areas that we have, we have lots of them to spare, so I guess it just comes down to the value of student contact time, um, as well, but, uh, but again, right now, like I say, we feel very confident, because we've been continuing to kind of build some more PD in, um, and as we go so, but yeah, it's certainly an opportunity, you know, or, uh, the Thanksgiving opportunity, you come back for two days, I know all of the, uh, swallow, um, has given their, their whole student population, uh, but we could be more activity on or whatever, again, they must have looked at some of the data or their feedback from their family, they have their staff coming on Monday and Tuesday, doing some PD that way too as well, so. Uh, but from a Christmas standpoint, uh, seven days and just kind of looking at that student contact is and trying to get out still, you know, that first weekend, June, or that second.
Well, I figured, and I know we're following, but I just said, okay, that's all right.
But we're actually going to, we're not going to school on Friday, the twenty second, and they are, and most of the feeder schools are going there, but I heard it already, it's already clear, I mean, everybody wants an extra day this year already. Do you feel that?
It's hard when the holidays fall on the weekend and everyone looks forward to it falling during the weekend.
And I think last year was a little bit extra, in that standpoint too, so we don't need to worry about that, there's an all game on the second, so.
One year that happened.
I already had that.
A good question.
Okay, is there any other discussion? What's been made and seconded to approve the twenty three twenty four school calendar, all in favor, say aye. Hold at the same time, motion carried, we're on to the final draft of the two twenty two administrative contracts.
This is the second reading for the board, and, uh, you're committing any data, again, the administration is recommending the board make a motion to approve administrative contract policy two 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 and three second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve administrative contract policy two twenty two.
This is changing it from passive to active.
Passive to active.
Correct, is that the right terminology?
Correct, yep, yep, and that activeness you will see in future meetings in January, the board will formally act on any approvals of either extensions and or renewal of contract, administrative contracts. That would be recommended.
Any other discussion? Okay, there's been motion and a second to approve administrative contract policy two two two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold at the same time, aye. Motion carried. Okay, we are on future meetings and agenda.
So, uh, January thirtieth, last Monday of the month, again, we would need to first take statute to declare open enrollment seats for the next school year as well as, uh, you know, we've already acted on the fourth grade move, uh, or the state there, and, uh, we will approve administrative contracts. Those are two items that will, that have to be on there, one per policy and the other first day statute.
I would like to add to the January thirtieth meeting, a discussion by our board of whether we should reach out to, uh, neighboring school districts to talk about, uh, joint services or consolidation.
Would that be just a discussion or possible action?
No, just the discussion. I mean, discussion is, you can, you can direct the administration to begin to have, so, um, there is going to be some, uh, a formal meeting due as well, the, uh, the Arrowhead superintendent's got together and to talk about some of these things, there'd be school plans, shared services, um, and that meeting, I do believe is in February, again, I'll share that with the board, that'll be obviously open to the public, but, uh, it's a meeting that, uh, all of the school board members of the consortium are invited to. Again, more important details on what that looks like, uh, forthcoming, and I'll get you guys out to save the date, if that's something you're interested in, so, so that email, yeah.
Help me out, just something else we've talked about this morning that I want to.
We're going to talk about the, uh, the, the board and legal policy.
Yes. Talk about that, uh, policy concerning, uh, board members having rights to, uh, money in the legal.
Dean was talking, I, my hope is that we have, again, the policy committee will be setting some time together to review the hundreds proposals and one of the policies in there is the, uh, the, the legal, you know, district legal services and things like that, so Dean requesting if I, you're right, Dean, to, to pull that policy out of the first read instead of they clump together with all of the policies, pull that out separately and have it on the agenda and a separate policy topic for first read.
The other items I, board members who would like to be on the future boardrooms?
I would like to add one, um, I don't know if it's considered adding one or just bringing it back, but I don't think the students are allowed?
They're coming in January.
Okay.
Yep, that'll be, uh, primary student showcase, that's coming back in January, yep, and that'll kick off our forum.
Okay.
Yep, you got it.
Thank you. Who's coming?
Third grade.
Third grade?
Third grade. Okay, that's not a secret. Not a secret anymore.
Any other items on future meeting agenda?
As usual, just let me know, email in, twenty three, so. Motion for adjournment?
Second, the motion and a second, I'll, yeah, hold them. Meeting after the term.